So now we have school board spotlight. Is it on?
I think it's on now, Rachel. Good evening. Glad to bring y'all two spotlights tonight. The first... Oh goodness, there we go. Okay, School District Five's Executive Director of Operations, Mr. Todd Beedenbow, has been inducted into the Student Nutrition Association Hall of Fame by the School Nutrition Association of South Carolina. This award recognizes those who have provided extraordinary contributions to school nutrition programs. He is only the fifth person who has been inducted into this group. Todd has had many contributions to our district and the industry as a whole throughout his career, but perhaps most important is that it would be difficult to find someone who has a bigger heart for our students and their well-being. So congratulations, Todd, and please come up to be recognized.
One, two, three. One more, one, two, three.
All right. One more, I'm assuming. We've had 11 School District Five juniors and seniors be named among this year's National Recognition Program Scholars by the College Board as either national African-American scholars or national Hispanic scholars. The group were eligible for the recognition based on their GPA, PSAT scores, and AP exam scores. We're excited that in this group, all four of our high schools are represented, so we're very proud of that. And most of them are here with us tonight, so I'm gonna call them up real quick. From Ermo High School, Jamari Baxter Woodard. From Dutch Fork, Morgan Baxter. From Dutch Fork, Ebony Davis. From Dutch Fork, Joshua Dean. From Ermo, Shayla Harris. From Ermo High School, Logan Spencer. From Dutch Fork High School, Tasia Weber. And from Chapin High School, Audrey Reichert. And then we also have with us tonight from Ermo High School, Dr. Karen Hampton; from Dutch Fork, Mr. Barry Lindler; and from Chapin, Mr. Michael Ames.
All right, guys. On three. One, two, three. Say one more. One, two, three. Awesome, thank you.
Members, this week, as you probably know, is American Education Week, and so we would love it if you guys would do a quick picture for us and we'll put on social media.
All right, one, two, three. One more, one, two, three. Awesome.
That's so cute. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you, that's our favorite part. That's why we're here, those kids. Superintendent's report. It looks like Dr. Ross has a lot of good stuff to tell us.
We have a lot of items that we want to bring to the boards and the community's attention. We started out asking the question, "How are the children?" And so for tonight, we're gonna start off with, "Who are the children?" Our 45-day report brought to us by Dr. Harris.
Thank you. Good evening to our boards, Dr. Ross, administration, and general community. Wanted to just share with you and answer the question, "Who are our..." Alrighty then. There we go. Who are the children? And I think what we'll do is address that question by responding to our 45th-day report or 45th-day enrollment. I think it's important that, as we look at that, that we take into consideration something that we've shared along the way that we report our enrollment in terms of what we call milestones, those milestone dates throughout the course of the year. We know that every day in the school year is important, but there are certain days that we pay particular attention to, and those are our 10th day, our 45th day, 90th, 135, and 180th day of school. Having said that, I wanted to give you just kind of a glimpse at what our enrollment looked like over the past couple of years, particularly with our recent health crisis that we continue to experience in a small degree at this point. School Year 2019-2020, as you can see, those milestone dates are listed there on the left-hand side. 10th day, we had enrollment on that particular day of 17,442. And for purposes of 45th day, 17,546. And as you look at that left-hand side, the numbers continue to fluctuate, concluding on the 180th day at 17,000 students, 551. Over on the right-hand side, you will see the following year, which is school year 2020-2021, again, following the same course here with our milestone dates listed, but you see an additional column that has highlighted there in red, which shows that particular year when we experienced the crisis in greater degree, that there were a reduction or a loss of students. And as you can see in the 10th day, again, minus 694 students. And that 45th day, of 736, where we experienced the greatest decline in enrollment, concluding on our 180th day of minus 674 students. Having looked at that, we wanted to just take a look at, what about this year? Who are the students in School District Five for school year 21-22? Again, on our 10th day, and this was dated as of August 31st, we broke it into three different categories. Our in-person enrollment on the 10th day was at 16,434. Our virtual program, Five, enrolled currently on that day, 756 students, for a total of 17,190 students on our 10th day of enrollment. But more specific to tonight's conversation about the 45th-day enrollment, which was on our 45th day of school, was October 21st. Our in-person enrollment at that particular time was 16,541. And there, on the right-hand side, you see an increase of 107. What that simply means, and there is smaller writing there in finer print, that says, "Since the 10th day to the 45th day, there was 107 students, more students in person attending our schools." For Five, on that particular day, 740 students. And it says a minus 16. What that simply says is that there were 16 students who actually returned to in-person instruction. They're reflected in that 107 that we just spoke of. Again, this is movement of students between the 10th day of school and the 45th day of school. On our 45th day, October 21st, we had an enrollment of 17,281 students. That was an increase from the 10th day of 91 students. So our numbers continue to grow. We are back on track, very similar to where we were pre-pandemic in the 2019-2020 school year. I also wanted to simply give a word, a shout-out, if you will, to our planning and accountability, who are integral part of making certain that our enrollment is accurate, that there is a very rigorous process of ensuring that the numbers are accurate and correct before they are posted and before they are made public. So we certainly want to thank them for their hard work for doing just that. This is information, today is day 60, or at least we're on the after hours, so today was day 60 of school. And so we look forward to counting our day 90, as we look for information regarding our connections with our finance because of those 45th, 90th, and 130, 35th days are very critical and crucial to any school district. So with that, that is our information related to the 45th-day enrollment.
On that presentation, questions, Ms. Hines?
Yes, I have a question, Dr. Harris, that maybe you could answer. On the handout that was given to us about the school-of-choice enrollment data and those 45th-day numbers, on it, it outlines the school and whether they were zoned, it was a magnet, or other, our school of choice, or other. What is that other number? Or, so like, for example, Ballantyne Elementary is the first school, and it says zoned, and then other. And then if we looked at H.E. Corley, it says zoned, magnet, other. What is that other?
This is information, I think you pulled for, so you want to allow him to speak to that. This was a report that he shared with us. You want him to just give us that information.
If I jumped ahead, I'm sorry. I just saw that attached to the enrollment data.
Yeah, absolutely. There are a variety of reasons why a student could be coded as attending a school they're not zoned for. That includes, our most popular reasons for that include our special education programs, employee choice, hardship. We also have students who are coded that due to other reasons, such as homelessness. So it could include a variety of reasons. There are several reasons why a student may end up attending a school they are not zoned for. Those are the most popular reasons, the three that I mentioned first there.
Okay, and then on that same chart, it identified, because people aren't looking at this, it identifies it by grade level. And there's a couple of elementary schools that have the pre-K, the 4K, and there's only a couple of people in that number, so I don't think that they have a 4K program. Is that, can you speak to that? I think there's only two. I see Lake Murray and Piney Woods.
Yeah, there are some reasons why a student might be there. We have several students who serve in specific programs, whether it's speech-only programs, anything we receive funding for would be a reason why the student would be coded on there on those reports as attending the school, even if the school doesn't have an explicit 4K program. If we are receiving funding for a student to receive services at that school, they would appear in that report.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions, Ms. Huddle?
It's probably a question for Dr. Ross, but I apologize, because I know the audience doesn't see the detail numbers, but I was looking at the high school enrollment numbers, and in total, and it varies by high school, but in total across the district, our high school numbers are going down from ninth grade to 12th grade. And I was wondering if you had any, well, first of all, if we know the reasons why, do we have any tools to kind of find out what happens when children leave? And if you have any input on why we're seeing those go down?
I wanted to, I know if Dr. Willamond is available, or Anna Miller can speak to that. We do see large ninth-grade numbers, and then typically nationally, you see that shaving off as they move towards the senior year. It's just the number that concerns of how many we lose. However, in terms of tracking our students, Dr. Willamond, if you wanted to come forth and talk about some of the things that you and the high schools are doing to track students in terms of graduation rates and things of that nature?
Yes, sir. And that is a trend that we have seen, and Director Holden, I know, knows more of the detail of the specific numbers, but it is a trend we've seen with cohorts of the students in ninth grade being larger than what our senior classes are being nationwide. But I'll defer back to Director Holden, and here's a presentation on that. And what we're doing is, we are tracking our students by NGR cohort, as far as seeing what the number of students that are enrolled with us and where they have gone by graduation class, when they entered the ninth grade. So that's something that our school's working on. We worked last week on making sure that we have identified where those students are going and how we're going to make sure that they're on track to graduate.
Like the term you said, behind every number is a name. And so part of what Dr. Willamond is doing with the high school APIs and principals and school counselors is making sure that each one of those numbers, as we look at it, we know the name and we know the story behind that, because that's a national trend that we want to break here in District Five.
If I may have follow-up, do you think that the first jobs might help with that as well?
We really hope that, and you'll hear a little bit about that tonight, we were very specific in our meeting about who we are targeting. We know right now, if we look at trend data, that about 136 students are targeted right there in that group, district-wide, of those that we're going to look and say, "This is an opportunity for you to get involved." There are many, there's a myriad of reasons why children leave school, and we want to, that's another tool that we have to bring them back. I'm sorry, Dr. Willamond. Director Holden was another, in terms of the data, was there something else you'd like to add on, on that trend there?
Dr. Willamond noted the key part, which is that we track high school students in two ways, one by grade level, but also by that NGR statistic. And that's consistent with previous trends we've seen as well, whereas the students progress to the upper grade levels, we do see a difference in the NGR cohort and what grade level they're assigned to. That's something we constantly monitor to address the needs of students, but that's, Dr. Willamond summed it up.
That's another point that you will see, the junior class will have children who are coded as juniors based on the credits that they receive, but they will actually walk in the spring because of their NGR code. Yeah, great job. All right, so we have talked about, "Who are the children?" We're gonna talk academically, "How are the children?" And so our Chief of Academics and Administration, Anna Miller, will come forth with her team and talk about, "How are the children doing academically?"
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, and want to be sure to also say, "Happy American Education Week" to all of our educators, especially those in D5 who work so hard every single day to love and grow our students. We have some information for you tonight, based on two measures. These certainly are not our only measures, but two that we felt were appropriate to bring to you at this point tonight, and that is our first-quarter grades. We just finished our first nine weeks. And so we compared in looking to see where our students are and what their needs are and how we can help them and combat any of the learning loss that we're hearing so much about. We looked at our first-quarter grades from the 19-20 school year and compared those to our first-quarter grades in the current school year, the 21-22 school year. Some, I know these numbers are small, and I apologize for that, but some important things to note are that we are seeing. In grades six through 12, we are seeing a higher percentage of Ds and Fs. We see a little less discrepancy in that in the elementary level, a slight increase, but less than 1% difference there. In third through fifth grade, again, slight discrepancy there, not much of a change at all, less than 1%. We do see a greater increase in sixth through eighth grade, about 2% difference, though. I think we all expected some learning loss, but you hate to ever say that you're pleased with learning loss, but we can deal with a 2%. We can gain that back. So about 2% in sixth through eighth grades, difference in those grades, the percentage of Ds and Fs and the percentage of As, Bs, and Cs during those two years. And then as we move up to high school, ninth through 12th, it does widen a little bit to about 5% difference. So while we are seeing an overall dip in our first-quarter grades, our teachers, of course, are working extremely hard to meet the needs of our students and continue to grow them academically. Our second measure has to do with our MAP projections. We finished our fall MAP testing, and we have those projections on how students should do on the SC Ready test. These are projected proficiencies, and we're showing you from fall of 19, those projected proficiencies, to the fall of 21. Of course, SC Ready has four different categories, the exceeds, the meets, the approaches, and the does-not-meet or not met. Again, we do see the increase in does-not-meet and the decrease in meets and exceeds in all levels in reading and math, with the largest increase in does-not-meet being in the area of math. We have found that the MAP projections are reliable indicators with how students will do on SC Ready, but a silver lining in this is that the scores on SC Ready typically come in slightly higher than the projections from MAP. Our teachers, of course, are using other screeners and other assessments to identify growth opportunities, and they're using the high-impact strategies in their instruction. So again, as we expected, we are seeing this. We did see this across the state, at the state level as well, replicating that. As always, and as you mentioned last time I spoke, District Five is doing better than the averages at the state, so we have a little bit less learning loss there. And we'll continue to monitor these grades quarterly, of course, and then monitor our MAP projections. We do those two more times, once in the winter and once in the spring, and we will continue to respond accordingly to meet all of our students' needs. We did want to bring, I'm gonna ask Ms. Tina McCaskill, Director of Elementary Education, to come forward. We did want to bring to you some strategies that we're using and some programs that we're using that are new to us this year and efforts that we're making to combat this learning loss. So Ms. McCaskill will talk to us about the elementary, and then Dr. Willamond will come back up for the secondary, and then I will close us out.
So numbers, just like we said, every name has to have, you have to have a name with every number. Whenever you look at numbers, you have to have actions that go with it as well. So hopefully, these will show you a couple of things that we are doing to make that action clear. So one of the things I'm really excited about, whenever we talk about COVID and all the virtual world, there's good things that have come of that, not all bad. So we've learned that some virtual teaching and virtual learning can happen, and teachers always say, "Well, you know, I need another person in my classroom. I've got groups, I've got five, six, seven groups of kids that are in my class, and I'm trying to teach one and trying to find out what everybody else can do." This will allow a live certified teacher to be within the virtual world while the teacher's teaching, and then the students are learning on their computers as well. So we have this in our elementary schools that's going to be taking place during regular instruction. So a lot of our schools, most of our schools, have what we call a "when" time, it's "what I need." And we've identified students that are struggling in either ELA or in math and are able to provide for them twice a week lessons in those areas. So the next slide will give you the numbers, but we have 438 students who will be participating. Second and third graders will be with reading, and our fourth and fifth graders will be with math. That was very intentional. Math, as we see going into the middle school ages, really, we begin to see a dip in our math scores. And so we thought that if we could catch our fourth and fifth graders and try to find those gaps in their learning, that we would be able to propel them forward, so that hopefully that loss will not show up as great as they go into their middle school years. So the tutoring will take place on Mondays and Wednesdays for 30 minutes. If we happen to have a Monday holiday, which as you know, tends to be kind of the norm, we have that scheduled on Thursday. So teachers have the schedule for the entire year, they have a calendar, they have a Google calendar that reminds them of what days their students meet on that. And they took a diagnostic test last week on the platform, and the tutors will use that diagnostic to help guide them forward, to know what specific needs their students need. And then I get recordings of all of the lessons, so that I can check in and kind of see what's going on. Of course, our administrators and our teachers can see what's going on, because they can stand right over the backs of the students and see what's happening. And this has been able, this has given us a chance to just look to see what other options are available to help our students. And when I met with teachers like two weeks ago, I said to them, "My number-one goal in this is not another thing on your plate, it's a way to help you as a teacher." And so they have been troopers with something new and are looking forward to seeing what happens. Today was the first day, and it was successful, so that's a good thing. So that is varsity tutoring as a whole. You'll see that, there's a slide here that shows you a little bit of what the platform looks like. There's a live support system right in the platform, so if a child has a question, they can go right to that live support. So the teacher doesn't necessarily have to come over and help with that, they can go right there and get support. Like, if for some reason their computer's not acting just right, they can get that support. Our next option is DreamBox. And back in, I guess, May, the state came forward with the proposal that DreamBox learning could be utilized for kindergarten through fifth grade, and the state would be paying for that for three years. And I was asked to look into the program myself, and I dug into it, tried to trick the program, to be quite honest, and found that I couldn't trick it. But what it did was it truly adapted to teach kids where their mistakes were. So this is a math program. So many of you know that whenever you start to look at a program, you can put in MAP scores, and it might adapt to the MAP scores, and then it'll adapt up. This particular program really looks at what the child is doing and makes changes based on the mistakes that's being made. So we've got a quick video, it's about a minute and a half. Oops, well, maybe. All right. There it goes. There we go.
As educators, we know that every student comes to class with a different level of math ability, yet we teach a single process to an entire class at the same time. To give the best possible education to my kids, we actually need a teaching assistant for every student. We looked for math software to help. I found that many programs took a typical lesson and just converted it to a digital textbook. Another claimed to be adaptive, but all it did was move students faster or slower through the exact same lessons. But one, one was a revolutionary change, true adaptive learning. DreamBox is the only program designed with an intelligent adaptive learning engine. It starts helping students immediately and continuously assesses exactly where students are and adapts to how they learn in real time. DreamBox measures how students are thinking within the lessons, constantly individualizing what each student sees next. In fact, as a single student works on DreamBox for one minute, the program collects, analyzes, and responds to over 800 pieces of information about that student and how they learn. That's 48,000 pieces of data every hour, providing the most personalized learning experience possible. The results are amazing. The kids love it, they think DreamBox looks like a game. I think it looks like a teaching assistant for every student, a teaching assistant with infinite patience, unlimited data, and a perfect memory. With the help of DreamBox, I can give each of my students the education they deserve. It's time to learn more. Start now. Start now.
So after this summer, when we started looking into the program, we found that it was also available for grades six through eight. There we go. It's also available for grades six through eight. So through ESAR funds, we were able to provide this for our teachers for grades six through eight as well. So K through five is funded through the state, but six through eight, we have added as well as a, as a resource. So those are two that are impacting our elementary ages. And now I'm going to ask Dr. Willamond to come up for secondary.
Ms. McCaskill, we use that, my eighth graders use that at Northside Middle. And they actually love it and work on it in their spare time. And so I, I can attest that it works for eighth graders, so I'm excited we have it. Thank you.
And moving right along, I like what Ms. McCaskill said. What we're trying to do is provide tools and resources for teachers, not add to teachers, but provide them with resources that they can use to help supplement and not supplant their instruction. And that's what these, the next two items I'm going to speak about is about is. USA Test Prep has been around for many years and a lot of teachers have used this. And now we are able to fund this for the next few years. And the onboarding process is being taken place right now for K-12, which is the first time that we've had that opportunity. So teachers will, will start receiving this information in the next few weeks. From K-5, it's going to focus on ELA and writing. The middle school have full core content with ELA, social studies, math, science. And they're going to add the PSCT prep in addition to the high school having the four content areas of English, social studies, math, and science, where they usually focus on, in the past, just the EOC courses of Algebra One or, or English or Biology One or US History. Now it's going to be across for all core content. And they're going to add college and career readiness to it with SAT prep, ACT prep, AP, Accuplacer, which is for college admittance, and ASVAB to help those students reach that college or career readiness and/or military preparation assessments. What they can do is use this as, students can use this as independent practice. Teachers can use this to work with assessments and build those assessment components that's aligned to the standards. So it's not like a, a box that they have to, to click on. They can adapt and make it on their own. And they can also communicate with, with parents and about student progress as they go through making these formative assessments. It is interactive for the K-8 students component with a lift-off feature that they have. And then the last one I'm going to speak about is what the high schools are going to use, which is our folks and our teachers. So we have varsity tutors for the elementary. We're going to use high school teachers and have been using high school teachers in tutoring for our, our students. And what we're able to do now is offer specific grade-level tutoring from our teachers instead of having to use the, the school day. They can do this after school on the, or on the weekends. We have a different grants where it reaches special ed students to make sure we, we support our special needs students. Where some of our schools are able to feed our students, provide transportation. Or regular ed students, we're able to provide that extra enhancement of, of enrichment after school. This works with our academic recovery plan that each high school submitted. Each high school principal spoke to their teams at their school level. And the teacher says, you know, one, quote, one high school principal said, you know, there's no better person in front of our kids than our teachers. So that's what we want to do. So we've made that happen because of your blessing to allow our high school teachers to provide that extra support that the varsity tutors are going to be able to provide our elementary students. Ms. Miller?
Thank you so much, Dr. Willamond. And then wanted to just conclude with another update on our COVID student support team. Of course, all of our schools continue to offer the service, as you've noticed. Thank goodness on that dashboard, there has been less of a need for that recently. And we hope that that trend continues. One adjustment that we did make, based on feedback from our schools, from our families, is that our parents said that they needed a little bit of time, once the student came back to school, to get caught up. Oftentimes, the child didn't feel like doing the work then. So we adjusted right then and there and added a week to that time. Of course, then we work with any students who need anything else longer. But that was added for all students so that they would have a week when they came back to school. I just wanted to let you know that as of November eleventh, with our COVID student support teams, overall, we've served three thousand four hundred and ninety-five students with this program. Just recently, from October eleventh to November eleventh, it's six hundred and ninety-three students. Of course, the majority of those, three hundred and seventy-six in elementary, a hundred and forty-six in intermediate and middle school, and a hundred and seventy-one in high school. And then that concludes our How Are the Children? But I did just want to make sure that you saw in your board packet, our Comprehensive Health Education Board Advisory Committee for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Of course, this is a thirteen-member advisory board that assists in the selection of components and curriculum materials. And that concludes our.
Yeah, I was going to ask if there are any questions. Yeah, I had one, I'll fade mine until the end. Ms. Hines?
Sorry, I have a couple of questions about some of the, the different strategies that we're using with, let's just take the USA Test Prep. That program, is that a, a nationwide program?
I believe it is, yes. Corey, do you know that? Yes, I believe it is.
Okay, and so it provides supplemental support for elementary school, middle school, and high school curriculum for ELA, math, science, and social studies, correct?
That is correct.
So how is this?
It has some other components as well, but those are the ones that we're, we're using.
So how are these programs vetted to ensure that we don't have improper material included? And the reason I ask is because across the country, there's a lot of conversation about what curriculum is being taught. And in the last few weeks here in South Carolina, we've noticed that there are supplemental materials included in different school districts and maybe ours of material that is not taught to the standards and it's supplemental material. And so as we bring in these electronic supplemental devices to help our students, how are we making sure that we don't have pornography or other type of curriculum that has not been approved by our district? How are we vetting this?
Yeah, we have a vetting process. Ms. McCaskill just went through that most recently with our varsity tutoring. But anytime we use a new company or look at working with a new company or a new program, we do have a specific vetting process. Tina, do you want to share kind of a few of those steps?
So on top of the vetting process of just all the confidentiality pieces, there's that piece of it. But then like the varsity tutors, we have, like myself, but our coordinators also, we look at exactly how that curriculum is utilized. So it's by state standards. So even though, yes, this is used nationally, this is specific to South Carolina state standards. And whenever we go in and we pull up those standards and we look at, like, USA Test Prep is really a test prep organization, software. So it's creating questions. So those questions are very specific to state standards. So that piece of it would not have any type of pornography or outside videos, things like that. There would not be any of that as part of that program. It's very specific to the state standards. And we have looked at that content. Several of our schools have used this for a couple of years now. This is the first time it's been district-wide. With, with others, we also go into and really dig deeply into the content that's there.
Right, so I guess part of my, so you kind of talked to the varsity tutors, not necessarily this test prep. So I'm just expressing my concern. I just want to make sure that we don't, I mean, I don't know. I don't, I mean, that's why I'm asking. But when we talk about how we vet our materials, I mean, it's been brought to our attention that there has been a book that has been purchased in our district for middle schoolers that talks about empowering students against adults. And that shouldn't, that's not part of our curriculum. So I don't know how that happened and how that's being addressed. I'm not making any accusations. I'm just trying to figure out how, you know. I'm concerned because if parents were not paying attention to what is being approved by the State Department, there was a book that was put on the State Department list this week that was straight-up obscenity. And I want, and it has, from what I understand from the, the Department of Education, it has been removed. And I'm not saying that it is in our district. But if we hadn't been paying attention, that could have gotten into our district. So I feel like we need to make sure we have a heightened sense of scrutiny on what we're putting in front of our students right now. Because there's appropriate material and not appropriate material. And I'm saying this, Dr. Ross knows that I was going to bring this up. I, I feel like you're probably the appropriate person. So don't, I'm not attacking you, I'm just bringing up concerns.
Yeah, and Ms. Hines, I will, I will say that we did look into that. I believe the particular book was dealing with sociology. And so that has passed the first phase, if you will, of state approval. But it is still at the public review stage of that. And so citizens can, can let their feelings about that be known to the State Board of Education. Once the, the textbooks and materials are approved there, then it does come to the local districts. And then we do form committees at the local level, made up of parents, community members, and educators to review. Because the, the state will give us X number of textbooks to consider. Our teachers look at that, at that, our parents and community members. And so it does go through several processes. And then our board actually does approve of any of our textbook materials. So yeah, the, the book that I believe you're referencing is currently at the state level. Now, it has passed the first review at the state level. But I believe that State Board meeting is December fourteenth, I think, where they'll, they'll do those final selections.
Right, so I understand that about that book. I mean, I'm just, but the, you don't normally hear that that happens. And because people are paying attention right now, we're seeing that things get through the cracks. And when we approve a book, we don't go through every single page. And I'm sure that your committees don't go through every single page. And then what happens is someone sees it and it becomes an outrage. So that's, I'm just asking how we protect that in here, and I appreciate.
Yeah, absolutely. And we do have the processes similar to what Ms. McCaskill was talking about, you know, and like I talked about with the textbooks. We have some of those same procedures in our libraries and media centers as well. But there is always a way for, for parents and, and citizens to let us know and to ask us to review those materials as well.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes, Dr. Ross, we've heard, one of the key things that I heard tonight is that, that you have to have a name with a number. Okay, so we've seen a lot of numbers and, and we've all discussed how, coming back from COVID, we would have mental health problems. And I can imagine that I've seen, you know, we have some slippage that we've seen in some cases up to five percent that you just showed us in that, in that graph. And I was just wondering if you guys could tell us, where does it enter into the realm of where a student? I, I've always been intrigued about the interface of where we get mental health in the process. I mean, I can just see, you know, that, I know that if I were a high achiever, you know, two years ago, and then, you know, all of a sudden I'm not, and I can't figure out why. I know that would be very stressful, you know, just in, in, just in one little regard. Never, never mind everything else going on in the community. Can you give us?
And we always say in the education world, there's two philosophers that we follow. One is Abraham Maslow, who talks about the hierarchy of needs. You cannot learn if you're hungry. You cannot learn if you're not safe. And we say that Abraham Maslow comes before Benjamin Bloom, who talks about the, that, the Bloom's Taxonomy of Learning, so getting to the highest levels of creation. I'm going to ask Dr. Harris, in part of our ESAR plan, he has brought together some, his task force of social-emotional learning and help to, of, of staff that we were actually onboarding in January. So like Dr. Harris, if you can speak to that, about how we're assisting on that, those, those issues as outlined by Abraham Maslow.
Absolutely, thank you. To answer your question in part, Ms. Lovell, it can be at any time, quite frankly. Is there, students can early in the process as we learn of, of student needs? It can be later in the process, just kind of depending upon where the, either whether it's the psychologist or the school social worker, the school council, wherever they are in what they do at the school level, they can certainly dispatch their mental health to be a part of that team. What to Dr. Ross is speaking of, we found that, as we all know, that the number of students and the number of needs continue to increase because of the, the, the health crisis and pandemic. And as a result of that, we're going to utilize some funding in our ESAR to bring aboard what we call or consider clinical counselors. And we're going to look at having clinical councils, three clinical councils per geographical area. So in our Irma, Dutch Fork, and our Chapin area, to specifically look at those students who are those tier-three, those higher level, those more acute cases that our school social workers, that our psychologists, that our school counselors are, that are over and above and beyond their current caseloads. We're going to have them to take a look at those and to be engaged, directly engaged with those students, with those families, understanding their communities and what they bring to the school so that we can better address the needs of those students. So we're really looking forward to bringing those persons on board in January. We're in the process now of, of completing some of the interview processes. And we think that this is going to make a unique difference in what we've done here before with our students. But again, because of the past year or two that we've been involved with this pandemic, we do think this is a critical and opportune time in which to bring these persons on board for a select period of time. They are not, obviously with ESAR, it's going to be here for the life of ESAR, those staff persons. But they have a short period of time to make the greatest impact. And that is the message that we're sharing with them as we interview. And we're looking forward to them doing so beginning, at least somewhere around January and thereafter.
That answered, Ms. Garnett, with your hand up.
Sorry to go back, but I had questions about the, the programs that we have. So the question I had, I think I just need clarification. So I understand that the varsity tutors is targeting four hundred and thirty-eight students. But is the DreamBox supposed to be for all math students? Is it, and is this program going to be mandated that all math teachers have to use it? Or is it a tool that they may use if they want to?
It is through eighth grade and it is optional for teachers to use if they choose to do that.
That's what I need to know, thank you.
I wanted to ask about, and it wasn't the varsity tutor, was it the, I don't know which slide it was, but I was asking this, it was the after-school tutoring?
Yes, ma'am.
And that is with a teacher?
Yes, ma'am.
And that teacher is paid extra for that tutoring?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Had to be sure, had to take, be sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I appreciate, it may have been you or it may have been Ms. McCaskill. I appreciate you realizing that you don't want to put something else on a teacher. There's so many things. It is their job to teach, but I just wanted to be sure. Because, because we also have a lot of times, teachers just stay after school and tutor, you know, as part of their regular day. So I just wanted to be sure about that. And, and I would like to just say too, while you are here and Dr. Ross, I would like to just be sure, I, I agree with Ms. Hines that it's important that parents know their options and their, the rights they have as far as, you know, vetting some of our curriculum. But I would point out, we need to lobby your legislators that make the laws above us and set the standards. And so I, I think, as Ms. Hines said, it is a major concern. I'm sure all of us as school board members have heard from constituents. So I think it was good for you, I appreciate you addressing how you do vet it and how, Dr. Ross, with your staff, that you know it's a very sensitive matter to a lot of parents. And I, I hope that we are, we will all be vigilant to be sure there's not something reaching our children that should not be reaching our children. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
To that point, oh, I'm sorry, there's a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
You're fine. I just had a question with the after-school tutoring. I know that for the high school, there's a sign-up process, correct? Do we know approximately how many kids we have served since we have started that? And are teachers seeing that it is helping to help the students?
I can tell you that through all of the educational literature and research that I've seen, tutoring has been one of the highest impact strategies that, that we see. And so I don't have the specific numbers for you yet from those high schools. But I can tell you, and Ms. Hines, you're right, our, our teachers are tired. It is a hard year. They certainly do have the option to do that. But I'll tell you that my heart is warmed every day by the desire of our teachers in District Five to make sure that our students are growing academically and, and the effort and the energy that they put forth to do that. And so they really are stepping up to the plate, you know, especially with the specific content that we have in high schools to do that. The principals that I've talked to, you know, certainly do believe that it is working. But I'll be happy to bring you back another report when we have a little more data on that.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I know I've got one that's there. So I was just curious how, if, if it is working, if people are, if kids are signing up and that they are seeing an impact. So.
I do know that kids are signing up. I do know that it's taking place. I'll get you some more information at our next presentation.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Gardner?
So I, I just wanted to reiterate, or maybe go over this one more time. So we do approve textbooks, but we actually don't, it's not, we don't approve programs like, or, you know, the software. And I'm wondering if that's something that the state allows, or are we supposed to be doing that? Or is that something we should be looking into? Well, and that's my first question. My second question is, sometimes I think these programs are great, but there might, or even a textbook might be great, but only have a few pages that need to be removed. With these programs that we have signed up for, do we have the capacity to, as a district, if we do find material we don't like, instead of throwing the whole thing out, are we, do we have the capacity to go to the software managers and say, we don't like this particular module, or we don't like this particular statement, and have them throw that out and not be with our students? Or do we have to throw the whole thing out?
So I don't know that we can answer that specifically for the ones that we brought tonight. I can tell you that these companies and the representatives have been extremely responsive to us. And so I have every indication to believe that they would work with us. We have other companies who have done that with us as we, as we've used their programs. So I believe that, that to the ability that they could do that, they would. But I do not have a definitive answer for you on that right now.
Ms. Hines?
I would, I would just kind of say to what you're, what you, I mean, I agree with you, Nikki, on that, I'm Ms. Gardner on that. I think one of the things that is concerning to me, I mean, not only with some of the, you know, software solutions that we have out there and different online programs that I know can be really beneficial, but also have some questionable material is, and how the board approves this, goes more to the supplemental material that is allowed within our district that is not necessarily an approved curriculum, but something that is supplementing instruction and what, and how that is vetted and how that is allowed into libraries and classrooms. And just really know, understanding what that process is, because I think that that's where we get into a little bit of trouble. You know, not just necessarily our district, but that's what we're hearing be an issue. And I would like, you know, I would like a little bit more information on how that happens with the supplemental material. But then, Dr. Ross, you actually mentioned, a few minutes ago, you were talking about Maslow's hierarchy of needs and as how that interacts with social emotional learning. And I know that we've approved social emotional learning materials in our district. And I would just maybe suggest that that be a conversation that is had with the district on what exactly that is, what social emotional learning is, what you, what you mean. So that if there is, I think, I have no idea if there's misinformation or not, but I know that we're seeing, we're starting to see that, those buzzwords. And we're seeing that it's in the South Carolina Department of Education has a department. And I think that it would be helpful to have a better understanding on what that is, so that we know where those questions are coming from.
That's a great point. And to that, I want to make sure our language is very clear. Lucy Bailey has, has worked with us a lot on, on the training of our language in District Five, when we talk about that, in terms of, as Dr. Harris talked about, kids who are facing trauma. And, and I want to make sure that I think we understand that we're under bounds of what's called curricular speech. And so when that teacher's in the classroom, there's a state-approved standards, and we stay within that zone. Our opinions should not, never land on the, on the ears of a child. In fact, as a history teacher, I always made it known, you can never determine my position, my political stance, or my political position. I do not leave or ever leave my religion, but I never place it on any child. All right. My beliefs are my beliefs. But the curriculum that the state has approved is what we deliver. I think what's important, though, is that we understand, and Ms. Miller, can you speak to, if I'm a parent and I have concerns about any of the materials, whether it is state-approved, whether it's supplemental, whether it's online, whether it's a face-to-face, where can I go as a parent? I think last night, there was a text that was sent to me that was purchased for one of our middle schools. And if, if I have concern about any of the material, what, what do I do as a parent in order to raise that concern?
Sure. So if you have a concern, you're welcome to contact the school principal. That's probably your first line of contact, especially for any supplementary material. And then, but you're also welcome, if you have any concerns or want us to do any reviews on any, any materials, textbook, or library books, or anything like that. And our board policy, there is a citizens, a concerned form to fill out. I believe it's policy KEC. And so, and then you would submit that to the superintendent. At that point, we formed two committees, one at the school level and one at the district, district level. And we have a process for reviewing and vetting those materials. But, so you're welcome to contact us, or you're welcome to reach out to your child's principal as a first point of contact, who can then direct you which way to go and provide any forms or necessary information to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Huddle?
I would, I'd just like to make the point, while I think it's, it would be nice that we could vet everything realistically, having gone to an elementary school today and seen teachers who pay their own money to buy hundreds of books for children on every kind of topic imaginable. I don't think it would be conceivable that anyone vet all of those. So I like the fact that we have a policy in place. And, and I'm sure our teachers are doing their best to make sure. But I doubt that every teacher I saw today read every word of every book in their classroom. So just the mechanics of being able to do something like that, I don't think are realistic.
That's true. That's true. Any other comments on, on, for our staff? Thank you so much.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. McCaskill. And I want to thank you, Dr. Womack, and Ms. Miller for our report on how the children, at this point, we're going to go to Director Holden as we look at the COVID-19 dashboard update.
Thank you, Dr. Ross. For the current week, we have, almost all of our district schools are operating at mitigation level of green. We do have one school that's operating at yellow and one school operating at orange. The school at yellow is there because during the range of dates for this week's mitigation levels, they reached above 5% on the percent of students impacted. Our school that's currently operating at orange went above 10% of students impacted. The remainder of the schools are at green. That is because one of the key factors there with, that we've been looking at since the beginning is the overall risk level of the counties, which are, they remain at low for the second consecutive, at least second consecutive week, they've been at low. And we continue to monitor that piece of data along with the percentage of students impacted, percentage of staff impacted at each school.
That's good. It's exciting. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Director Holden. At this time, we'll move to our monthly financial reports. That'd be from our CFO, Marty Rolls.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Welcome.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Ross. Before you, you have your monthly revenue summary as of September 30th, 2021. One piece I want to point out on, you've heard him talk about the 45-day average daily membership and enrollment numbers. The piece that would be, or that would be modified on that, scroll up just a little bit more, John, the, the other way. Sorry. Scroll down. The Education Finance Act number, the 42 million, that is the number that will be adjusted based on the new enrollment numbers for the 45th day. Any questions on the revenues?
Any questions? No, ma'am.
All right. The expenditure summary is next. To date, we have spent 16.57% of the $201 million budget. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions? Seeing none. That was easy, wasn't it, Ms. Ross? When I saw those bus drivers, I'm glad we don't have anybody on strike. Like, some, there's one school district in South Carolina that, that's happening.
Working hard. All right. Thank you. At this time, we'll bring for the first of two presentations of our strategic plan. And so I asked Director Holden to come forth with our strategic plan update.
Thank you, Dr. Ross. As the board is aware, we have been working on our strategic plan for several months now, dating back to the previous school year. And we're here tonight to present another update on our progress with the strategic plan. With that, we're going to briefly review the needs assessment process and the goals, just because it's been a few months since we touched base about that. We're going to talk about the process that we've used in strategy development, as well as the recommendations that have come from the strategy development teams about next steps that we want to take in that process. As a reminder, our mission here in District Five has been a key part of the process of the strategic plan development. We've worked to incorporate the language of the new mission into our strategies and our goals, and also to ensure the spirit of that is held up through that process as well. The strategic planning process is a state requirement. All districts and schools are required to have a five-year plan. Typically, our five-year plan has aligned with the end of our accreditation cycle. That's a five-year cycle. You go through an internal review, a needs assessment, and you have an external review that occurs as well. However, our accrediting institution, which is called Cognia, formerly Advanced Ed, is in the process of updating their standards. The new standards go into effect on July 1st of 2022. Districts were given the option of delaying that external review until the new standards were in effect. And so we're anticipating that our external review will occur during the 2023, 2024 school year. Instead of waiting for that external review to occur, we undertook an internal needs assessment. Again, that's what dates back to last year. The needs assessment was conducted in the four areas that you see listed here, three of which are required by Regulation 43261. Those are school climate, student achievement, and teacher administrator quality. In addition, our gifted and talented programs were incorporated into this review because we are required to have a GT plan, gifted and talented plan. And since 2018, that has been part of our strategic planning process. So that was the fourth area that we studied and analyzed there and have proposed goals in as well. The needs assessment process was made up of 69 different individuals from around the district. They were parents, staff members, teachers, administrators, community members. They reviewed a wide range of data and then identified strengths and opportunities for improvement and drafted goals with us. The proposed goals were actually presented to the board on June 14th, and potential strategies were outlined at that time as well. I'm going to briefly review the goals that we discussed on June 14th, but then I'm going to talk you through some of the strategies that were initially discussed in, in a draft form at that time, as well as additional strategies that we've added in since then. The, the folks involved in the needs assessment were listed here. You can see the asterisk denotes the folks who were involved as committee leaders during that process. Our school climate goal is the first one. It involves the parent, student, and teacher satisfaction with the social and physical environment in our school as measured by the State Department of Education's annual report card survey. So we've got a parent, student, and teacher goal on the perception of the social and physical environment. We have a student achievement series of goals there. They involve academics and college and career readiness. You can see one, the first goal there focuses on reading and mathematics in grades two through eight, and student growth in reading and mathematics as measured by the MAP Growth Formative Assessment. We have a graduation rate goal. And we also have a college or career readiness goal, and ensuring that students are making progress towards those measures. We have, in teacher administrator quality, three areas. One is a focus on our overall retention rate. The second is focused on teacher satisfaction with working conditions. Again, that points back to the annual State Department of Education survey. The final area there, in terms of teacher administrator quality, moves away from retention and satisfaction with working conditions and into teacher satisfaction with relevant professional development opportunities, and ensuring that we are meeting the needs of our teachers as we provide professional development at the school and district level. For our gifted and talented programs, we have three goals as well. The first focuses, again, on student growth in MAP, growth in, in reading and mathematics. This time, though, focused on the subgroup of students who begin the year at, at or above the 90th achievement percentile. But again, looking at their growth during the year. The second one is the advanced placement passage rate, meeting or exceeding 68%. And the final goal is increasing the proportion of students who are coded as Black or African-American, Hispanic or Latino, or two or more races who are participating in AGP honors, AP, IB, or dual enrollment. So we have two goals focused on outcomes there and one goal focused on opportunities. The phase we're in now of the process, after utilizing the data to determine needs and setting goals based on our data, is to develop strategies and actions that will lead us towards achieving those goals. So what you're going to see outlined over the next few slides, in a very similar format, we're going to look at school climate, student achievement, teacher administrator quality, and then gifted and talented. We're going to be looking at the strategies that the committees have developed to help us achieve those goals over the next five years. Through that process, we had a team of 36 parents, students, teachers, administrators, and community members who took a look at the goals, took a look at more information related to the needs of the district, and then determined strategies that would best orient our work towards achieving those goals. That included, again, the examination of, of data, examination of the goals, and discussing underlying issues that might be obstacles for the district that we can address to ensure that we are meeting the needs of our students. Here, you can see the listing of the folks who were involved and whose time we greatly appreciate. It was used in the development of these strategies. Again, the asterisk denotes the team leaders there. School climate, there's a range of strategies we're implementing. And again, keep in mind the goal there, which is parent, student, and teacher satisfaction with the social and physical environment. So our first strategy, and I'm going to summarize them as opposed to reading them all to you. The first one deals with parent and family engagement. The second one deals with, as we previously discussed in the meeting, social and emotional development, social and emotional learning. The third one involves the establishment, teaching, and reinforcement of school-wide expectations. The fourth strategy involves our bullying prevention and intervention programs and practices. Our next measure involves school safety. And the final measure, as it relates to this, is the physical environment and, but will be addressed, will provide a safe and secure and equitable physical environment by monitoring, maintaining, and improving our district-owned facilities. Given that this goal addresses both the social and the physical environment, we felt it was appropriate to ensure that our facilities reviews and updates were included in this part of the plan. Our second area is student achievement. The first, and we worded these intentionally similar, the first three, because we wanted to make it clear, we have an overall focus. And then we have specific subgroups that we identified during the needs assessment phase that need some more focus in our overall strategic plan and our allocation of our work and resources. So first you see that we, the overall idea of strategy, one is to provide a challenging curricula and implementing research-based instructional practices to ensure the academic development and college or career readiness of all students. The second strategy is that same focus, overall focus, but with a specific emphasis on our multi-language learners. The third strategy involves our students with disabilities. Again, these are areas that we noticed in our needs assessment, there were issues we needed to focus on as a district. The fourth one involves career and technical education and ensuring that our graduates are career-ready. That was a specific recommendation of the board during our June 14th. That was a specific recommendation of the board during our June 14th discussion, but is also one that the needs assessment team and the, and the strategy development team were all passionate about as well. The next one you see there is on our adult education programs and meeting the needs of our adult learners, providing opportunities for them to become college or career-ready. And our final strategy is about differentiation and providing differentiated opportunities through our magnet and choice programs. Teacher administrator quality addresses a couple of key issues. We focus overall on teacher recruitment and teacher retention with an overall teacher retention strategy, overall teacher recruitment strategy, and then teacher recruitment and retention strategies that work to ensure that the, that our classrooms and our teachers and our faculty and staff and our administrators are representative of the students that we serve. You see another strategy listed there about ensuring support and professional development to our teachers who are coming to us through alternative certification programs. And the final piece there, again, goes back to our needs assessment process when we looked at the need for professional development programs with an emphasis on choice. All the committees thus far have felt it was important to continue offering those programs to our teachers to ensure that we had a wide range of professional development opportunities. And one of the reasons we have had sustained satisfaction to this point is because of the different offerings we have for our teachers. The final piece that we have relates to our gifted and talented programs. The first one that you see here are four strategies related, again, to the outcomes piece. Again, you see a similar language to what we talked about earlier with providing a challenging, challenging curriculum and accelerated curriculum to our gifted and talented students. We also see the second strategy, which is ensuring we have appropriate supports to students who are entering those courses for the first time, entering AGP, entering honors, AP, IB, or dual enrollment, and ensuring they're able to adjust to that curriculum and workload and thinking. The final, the third piece there that you see is professional development on the needs of gifted learners and ensuring our teachers and staff understand best instructional practices. The final strategy you see on this piece is providing opportunities for collaboration. One of the reasons that was seen as important is because you may have one school that has one teacher in one grade level, teaching a specific content or a specific course, and having that need for opportunity or opportunity for collaboration with other teachers, other schools, so they can discuss and collaborate on the lessons and units they're providing. The next piece that we see is on opportunities for participation in our gifted programs. So this ties into that, if you think back to the goals, we had two goals on outcomes and one goal on opportunities for participation. So you see that our first strategy relates to local identification for placement in AGP programs. The second one is providing parents with more information about the academic opportunities and supports that are available. The third one involves communication about the opportunities and the importance of taking the AGP, honors, AP, IB, or dual enrollment courses. And the final one involves how we provide opportunities and educational experiences in our classrooms to ensure that they are engaging and meeting the needs of students so that we can ensure more students are qualifying. The next steps that we're going to be taking as a district, we'll be looking at the specifics of each of these things. So we've talked about the overall goals. We've talked about some broad strategies that will help us reach those goals. The next phase is where we get into the specifics. So district administrators will be developing action plans for each strategy. Those will include specific action steps, timelines, estimated costs, funding sources. Now, some of them are free. I was just speaking to our safety team this morning about one of those ones that's free, that doesn't have a cost associated with it, which is the implementation of drill calendars and drill schedules in terms of school safety. Others do have funding sources, so we're looking at that part. And then we're looking at indicators of implementation. We're also looking to ensure that our practices here are aligned with our overall budgeting processes and aligned with our overall planning processes for upcoming school years. Our district-level action plans, we intend for those to be in place and completed and ready to discuss by December 17th. What we already know, though, is there are some actions that we do want to go and address. For example, during our strategy development process, one key part that we heard and discussed with folks from around the district was the need, when we look at teacher retention, of the need to improve two-way communication and utilize the information we're hearing in those conversations or in other information gathering techniques to better inform our action plans. So when we talk about we want a plan on teacher retention, well, how do we listen? How do we hear? How do we communicate information? And how do we use the things we're hearing to address those underlying concerns that maybe are impacting teacher satisfaction with working conditions, things that are impacting our teacher retention? So we know that some of the action steps that we're going to be implementing during this phase are going to relate back to that piece. That's a specific example we know is going to come out of it. And the reason I bring that up is because just like when we did our needs assessment, we had our goals, and then we had the strategies that came out of that. We knew some strategies were, were important during the needs assessment process. We already know there are some actions like that that we're already looking to incorporate into our action plans. Schools are also working through a similar process. All schools have drafted or are drafting their goals and their executive summaries of the needs assessments. They're working with stakeholder groups on that piece, for example, teacher leaders, school improvement councils. Schools will then be developing their strategies to address their goals. That will also include stakeholder input. Ultimately, schools will then be drafting their action plans after the district. So the intention is they will have their action plans in place for, by January 31st. This time, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Ross.
We stand for questions on the strategic plan.
How, if there are any parents that might be interested in serving on committees, and I know you had some names on there, and I know you use teachers and administrators, is there a way they can contact to, to request that? They may not want to, but I think it's good for the public to hear if they have an interest in serving on that.
Sure, they can send that to me or Dr. Harris. One thing I will note is that key part of that input process for the drafting of the goals and drafting of the strategies, we've done that piece. What we do is an annual review going forward, and those could be parents that we reach out to as part of that annual review process. As we do the action steps, that's very administrative-specific, and we're looking at making sure we've got costs and everything else. So that's part, that part we anticipate will be more of an administrative piece as we put that together. But that's, if they're interested in participating in the annual review of our plan, looking it over, we'll always look for support on that piece from parents. We are required to incorporate some level of parent, community, administrative input into the annual review that we, that we take, that we take to the state. So we'd love to have folks involved in that process, yes?
Thank you. I just thought that would give information. I know I've served on some over the years. Any questions, though? It's a lot of information, but I know this is the legwork, and this is awesome. You've done a great job to explain it. Thank you.
Well, I have one. It might dovetail better in with your First Jobs Initiative, but I will ask the question at the completion of that part.
Thank you, Dr. Ross.
So we'll get right into the First Jobs Initiative, and I want to thank our committee, Dr. Turner, Mr. Beedenbow, and we had Marty Rolls and Anna Miller, Dr. Harris and his team. We are working together to finalize pending approval tonight, our First Jobs Initiative. We're excited about offering these as our, in our December Jobs Fair. One thing was interesting, we talked to Representative Chip Huggins, who was speaking to the, I think it was the Truckers Association, and they're very interested in our C D L, but they, we're going to feel our, our position first before we start sending them everywhere else. But the interesting thing, I think the new motto, as you talk about, is earn while you learn. And there's a lot of students who need an opportunity, they're, they're working until 11 o'clock tonight, and that's, that's our students. And if we can give them opportunity to get some of this time back by being with us as they continue to learn while they, while they earn. But we're, we're very excited. We believe that the hard work that was done by the planning committee to put this together, our legal counsel going over all the things that we need in terms of onboarding them, in terms of financial literacy and working with our bank, you know, just making sure that we're not issuing checks and without any financial literacy. So we're excited about the student accounts that don't have the fees that our accounts typically have. All the high schools are represented by their career facilitators as we plan on onboarding this to all four high schools next year. We are piloting it at Ermo High School. So Ermo High School was well-represented with their administration, counselor, and C D F because pending approval tonight, we're going to actually move forward with identifying those students, as Member Huddle said, that will highly benefit from this. I think we want to, they may not show up when we advertise this, and so we actually may, we're using this as a way to get them re-engaged in the school. So we're excited with that. We are asking our parent advisory, our business advisory, we're asking our community advisory to help us with the soft skills, help us in terms of how do we teach communication, problem-solving, leadership? How do we teach work ethic, showing up on time? These are parts of the program that we want to develop. We're not going to have it perfect on year one, but we want to make sure we're not just giving them a job that we're working on, how we actually teach, showing up on time, showing up the right way, shaking hands, doing interviews. So a lot of that will be included in the First Job. So we're, we are excited about it, and pending this approval tonight, we look forward to bringing you our First Job employees to show you the work that they're doing.
You had a question?
Yes, okay. So, you know, part of this that we, you know, the, the part that we need to wrap our arms around is, is the strategies for job enrichment and alternative certification programs. And Mr. Holden talked about the strategies for alternative certifications for teachers. So, you know, we've been, we've been, some of us have been doing some creative thinking around that issue, how to attract people that are, that are making, you know, good salaries in, in industry and attract them to be teachers and then enrich their jobs so that they're, that they're doing things here that they, that they own, they're self-actualizing, if you want to use Maslow's hierarchy of needs, they're, they're self-actualizing. So that we have to attract them away from, from other pursuits so that, and stimulate them to be teachers. But to do that, we've got to also have those alternative certification programs. And I would like to hear, if you could, and I know you can't do that right now, it's unfair for me to, to bring that up, but I would like for us to have a, a part of your spotlight one time, at one time or another, to talk about how we can attract people from industry to be teachers, and that can round the corner because, I mean, I'll just have to tell you, if you, if you're, if you've been a teacher all your life, you're not going to know the things that it takes to, 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 to work in, in industry and vice versa. I mean, I, I couldn't any more come in here and be a teacher than, you know, than, than, you know, I could, you know, wish together a 747. I couldn't do it, but, you know, I do know other parts of it. So that's what I was hoping that we could come up with a strategy where we could round those two together, meld them together, so that your First Jobs program would really be a success.
And thank you, sir. Building on top of the First Jobs will be, and we'll have Director Priggy come, I think, Ms. Miller, to talk about the internships and the apprenticeships that will be added on to these programs. We're excited to work with a dual task force with Mittlin's Technical College to, there are a lot of hot jobs in the state of South Carolina that are going on field. And so we're excited, and I think everybody knows Mr. Ledbetter and, and his passion for that. So he's really to work with us, with Mr. Priggy and Mittlin's Technical College, so we can continue that earn while you learn model into those hot job positions. But to the point of using industry staff, I think our, our first level is working with Mittlin's Tech, and then the next one is, like you said, thinking creatively of ways we can bring them in. So we look forward to bringing that to the school board. And then our last item, and you have been very patient in our superintendent's report, is ways to support our, our teachers. And this is a teacher support pilot that we, we talked about. We've learned a lot of lessons from COVID. As you saw the dashboard, we were able to respond to Delta. We started out in orange. We didn't have that language. Now we know what orange means across the system. We're in green. We have the, the language of what that means across the system. But it has allowed us to drive back the numbers. Now, we recognize that that is a reflection of what happens across the, the country, but we have not had to close any school because of COVID. We have maybe delayed and responded that way, increased our mitigation, but we did everything we could to keep as many of our students in school. And that success is led to understanding and responding to the data and responding with additional layered resources that would help us keep kids in school. And so we wanted to use that by having these layered interventions, not just for COVID-19, but for classrooms. As you heard in our instructional report, not everybody's batteries are fully charged at the beginning of the year. We have a lot of teachers and staff whose batteries were, might have been at, at, at half-capacity or 75%, but no one came in fully charged. And as a result, a lot of this, we're seeing this in terms of our students and our teachers. It's, it's tougher this year for them. And we're seeing that in classroom behaviors. We're seeing that manifest. All behavior is, is a reaction to some need. And so if you can get at that need, you can drive that. So we're trying to use the same system that we have developed for COVID-19 to use it for classroom behaviors. Green is, I tell, the child needs no interventions. They're doing exactly what they're supposed to do. Yellow means that Akil is not doing what he's supposed to do. The teacher says get back on task, and Akil gets right back on task. But what we're finding is more and more students who are in the orange means that the teacher says get back on task, and the student does not comply. The student does not follow the teacher's instructions. And red means that there needs to be intervention. That's the suspensions, expulsions, MDRs. But what happens to that teacher is you have more and more oranges that are not, not supported. That teacher feels even more defeated. And so in our traditional model, what we do is we tell the teacher that you have to teach state standards, you have to handle academic deficits, you have to handle the behavior issues for your classes. And what we have done is we provided administrative coaching and resources to help them teach the state standards, the academic deficits, and the behavior issues. I work with a student or a few students, and two of those are seven reading levels behind their grade right now. Their eighth grader's reading on first grade levels. That's a lot of academic deficit for that teacher to make up. There are a lot of behavioral deficits for those, those teachers, and all of that weight on top of them just seems to be a lot. In terms of supporting them with this pilot, we looked at a model that was brought to us by United Way called the Accelerate Model. And in two summers, they were making amazing games with kids with academic and behavioral issues. And the reason is they gave the faculty a faculty. They gave the teachers support. I was joking the other day, I played football at Duke. We had to play Bobby Bowden in Florida State. We got coached a lot, but we could have used some extra teammates. So if we had 13 on the field, we would have felt proud and, and confident. Well, our teachers need 13 on the field. They need extra support, and we're providing that academic deficit. You heard a lot about it today with the tutors, literacy tutors and numeracy tutors, to help with those academic deficits. But I want to talk about the behavioral issues and what we saw with behavior or expectation coaches. I, I would not move forward without noting one, just as an example, Ms. Linda Johnson at H E Corley Elementary School, if you ever have a chance to talk to her about what an expectation coach really does, just spend a minute with Ms. Linda Johnson at H E Corley. She says, I do three things. I build positive relationships with the students. I know who they are. I know what their issues are. I know what they're going through. I go around to every classroom every day, and I check on every teacher to make sure that I have concerns with, if they have concerns with their, that student that's on my list or a student that needs to be on my list, any of those children in orange, I'm checking on them every day. And then I connect with the families. I know grandma, I know granddad, I know aunties and uncles, I know the mothers and dads. I know the situations there. To see her data on how many students she moves from orange to green or from red to yellow, to see that is very encouraging. We should build that capacity along our system. We should have that same response that we had with COVID-19 to move our schools from orange to green. And I think that is going to take that type of model. So we're excited to pilot this in Ermo Middle School and Ermo High School. And so that pilot will look like where the teacher will continue to receive administrative supports and resources. But they have 13 on the field. They have, in a sense, they have extras to help in terms of an expectation coach, literacy and numeracy tutors. We are building We are building this system. Right now, we have already hired five expectation coaches. Three will be at Ermo High School. Two will be at Ermo Middle School. They have already begun the work. And, and we look forward to seeing as many of those students who are in the reds and the orange move to the yellows and the greens. So with that, Madam Chair, members of the board, that concludes our, the superintendent's report. But I would like to say before concluding, our, our great nation would not be great without those who have given that ultimate service of serving us in the armed forces. And so we thank all of our schools, what they did last week, especially Thursday, to honor our veterans and to bring them in and let them know that we love them and we cherish their work, and we cherish their service. And to the veteran families, if you are, you have a family member that's serving in the military, you serve as well. And so we thank those as well. And last but not least, it is American Education Week. And so we just want to, just remind people, if they forgot, that our district, thanks to your, your actions, will give a one-time educational gift of $1,000. That'll be this Friday on November the 19th in honor of American Education Week. So with that, that concludes the superintendent's report. And we stand for any questions.
Ms. Huddle.
Um, I noticed at the end you said that we were doing the behavioral coaches at Ermo High School and Ermo Middle School. Is that going to be a pilot then? And if it works well, adjusted and rolled out?
Right, so we try to stick within the current budget. And so right now, we would, if that works well, we would bring that back in, in terms of next year to see how we can expand this. Now, it is important to note that we do have expectation coaches. I'm going to look at Ms. McCaswell to correct me where I'm wrong on, in, in Title I elementary schools? In Title I elementary schools. And we, we've already heard that the secret is out on the pilot. And so we have other schools that are saying, hey, we want expectation coaches too. I think it's the notion that it's not necessarily the name. We can call them whatever. It's that person that delivers those outcomes that we're investing in. It's those, those people like Ms. Johnson. And so we're also investing in how to train them, how to build that capacity. And so, you know, if, when you have hall monitors, they just seem to, you know, be policing. This is intervening, and, and, and we're excited about her data and building that along. So we're also not only piloting the people, but the processes behind it that move those kids from, from those red levels to those yellows and greens. And we look forward to communicating to you of how many are moving along that curve, just as we do with the COVID dashboard.
Dr. Ross, I, I, I think I'm the most excited about that of everything I've seen tonight, and I've seen a lot of good things. It's so, you always have behavioral problems with students. But one thing teachers have seen, and when you're talking about behavior, it's, it's almost that COVID, not only, it, it took away structure. It took away routine, you know? And that wasn't the children's fault or the teacher's fault. But it, it has impacted behavior, even of really good kids. It's almost like they've forgotten how to study. You're, you're, you're just almost reinventing the whole wheel. And teachers really need this extra person that's going to just concentrate on the behavior because sometimes the, the greatest learning loss is because of the small behaviors, not things that you, you need to be, you know, sent to the principal. It's just, sit down, Johnny, you know, stop talking, Susie. You're stopping the momentum of teaching. And this expectations idea is so good. And we've had them before, but I'll have to tell you, I've not always been pleased. Not every expectation coach had the same training as the person you're talking about and how well they did. And I, I would, I would tell you this, not to bring up negative, but to say we don't want this to happen. In some of our elementary schools, I had teachers say, little Johnny wants to go to the expectation, expectations coach. They get candy and they get to get out of the room. And you're going, okay. But then we had them with success. So all I would ask you is, and you're doing it, so you don't need me to tell you that. But I'm excited about it because it's so important. It's, behavior is stopping as much learning as anything going on in a classroom. Just trust me. Thank you for my little speech. I, I just, I'm excited. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Gardner.
So I'm very excited about this program too because I do recognize that all the students who are in green, if they have students in their classrooms who are in orange, they themselves sometimes tend to be yellow themselves. You know, it kind of changes. So if we can focus on the real issues, that we might be able to have a better learning environment overall. But that's my little two cents. But my question is, would these expectation coaches be pulling, and maybe even the literacy or the numeracy and the reading tutors, would they be pulling students out of the classroom or would they be assisting, going into the classroom with the teachers and assisting in? Or is it a combination?
We're going to leave that to the design of the principal. So we will try to provide those resources. It could be as we saw today with the adaptive technology that serves as the literacy. We are looking at this pilot, you know, ideally, we would like one expectation per department, right? We couldn't afford that this year, so we're just going to pilot this with these three. So it, it's going to be our, the, the principal's design on how best to use those resources. I think what's key, though, that you bring up is that they have to be free to be available. So they don't cover classes, they're not, you know, substituting or anything of that nature so that we can get utility out of them. Ideally, in the behavioral, it's a removal from the environment. So they are, they are pulled away so that we can keep that class at yellow and green. But in terms of the academics, that could be a, a team model. It could be small group, or it could be pulled away. And so we would leave that to the design of the, the principals and the teachers.
I know that it's still a pilot, so there will be things that have to be worked out. But how will the teacher call on that expectation coach? How will that relationship work? And could we see an expectation coach have multiple kids at one time?
We, we can definitely see that. You know, we were just talking about how many oranges you may have at one time, right? And I think we would be overwhelmed. And traditionally, what we have is the assistant principal who is supposed to respond. But assistant principals and as principals are dealing with more reds, and so oranges go unmet. And so what, what happened is the teacher could still hit the same panic button or the same button that they would call an administrator for the reds, but now they're doing it for the orange. At one particular school, they use a coding system. So they say code twos or code fours. But we're trying to create a, you know, a, a, a district-wide language for that, using our same cut, uh, cutler system for that. But the notion is the same way they would call an administrator, they could call an expectation coach.
Any others? Thank you so much. I know that was long, but it was very important.